The time is now six forty-six on January the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And this special meeting at El Campo Independent School District Board of Trustees is now called to order. Let the record show this meeting was duly posted in accordance with Section five-five-one point oh four-three of the Texas Government Code in regard to postings of public meetings and there is a quorum of members present. This time I'll leave the prayer and the pledge and we'll get started. Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for letting everybody be here tonight to come together to consider the important business set before us. Let us always remember that we strive for the same things and our end goal is always the same with the children of our community up at the forefront. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At every meeting, we send aside public comment.
Yeah, but I don't think we can just skip over those.
Nobody has posted for public comments?
No.
We'll go to the annual report.
So every year in January, you get the annual reports. On your table, I gave you a copy of all of the documents I'm fixing to go over, but I gave you only the district level copies. Inside the presentation, in the board book, is all the links to all of them. So you can go deeper with the campus level if you want to look at that by each area. So we're going to start with the TAPER report. This comes out every December. It's the first thing you see. I'm going to click through all of this. These are the different areas we'll go through. TAPER report, the PMS financial report, our district accreditation, the campus objectives, the, I wouldn't say school report, and our performance in post-secondary institutions. So we will start with the TAPER report. Too many clicks, too many words. So the first thing you see in front of you is the TAPER report. Comes out every December and it's basically a large report of a lot of information and it has a lot to do with our accountability from the previous school year. So it's all about twenty-one, twenty-two school year information. Comes out in December of the following year. So the first part you're going to see is Section one, the cover page of it. The cover page is going to have our accountability rating on it and our district was rated a B. You're also going to see the special ed determination status and currently we are a needs intervention district. Ms. Anderson is working with the campus principals on how we can get out of that situation.
What are the different, I mean, what's above and below it, needs intervention, do you remember?
There's four different levels and so we were stage three this year. I can tell you that. We have district distinctions. The high school this year got the distinction in academic achievement, ELA, and post-secondary readiness. The middle school got the academic achievement in science, academic achievement, social studies, and post-secondary readiness. The Northside also got it in math, in science, top twenty-five percent, closing the gaps, and post-secondary readiness. The district is only eligible for one and we did not get it this year. We did get it a few years ago. It's really, really hard to get, so it's a big achievement when we do get it, but we did not get it this past year. The second part you're going to look at is the STAR performance. This is all information. It starts on page three, if you want to flip as I go along. Starts on page three and this is all going to be about the information we've already shared with you in the accountability results, but it's just broke down a lot more deeper, I would guess you would say. You can see it by subject, by grade, by grades together. It's going to be put with English and reading together, I mean, English, all grade levels together, math all grade levels together. It looks at them at the meets and above level. So there's just a bunch of different ways they put this data out to you to look at. So those are pages three through nine. When you get to page twelve, that's when you start looking at the academic growth pages, information. And just as a reminder, academic growth starts in fourth grade and goes all the way up to high school to Algebra two, I mean Algebra one or English two. So those are the only subjects that are reported in growth. Then after that is the bilingual ESL performance information and that's on page thirteen and fourteen. And that's just telling you how those population performed at the approaches level, the meets level, the masters level. And then if you go to page fifteen through seventeen, you're looking at our STAR participation counts. And so this is just telling you in the different subject areas, our participation level over the different years, if it's gone up or down. And that's counted in our accountability. So we do want to make sure all the kids are taking their tests. Any questions on that first part? I didn't go into it deep, deep, but I'll be happy to answer questions along the way if you just stop me. All right, the next section is going to be on attendance, graduation, and drop out rates. And so this is looking at all of that information in various ways. It goes back all the way from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one, so it does lag a whole extra year compared to the other data in this report. Then it goes into the graduation profile and that's on page twenty-one. After that, starting on page twenty-two through pages twenty-six is your CCMR information. And this is looking at our students, if they're college and career ready, when they graduate. So there's various ways that we can get credit for the students getting that and that's your TSI results, CTE coherent sequence, the completed, receive credit for college prep courses, AP test, and SAT and ACT results. So we do have students that get multiple checks, you could say, in this area. But our goal is for every student to graduate with at least meeting one of these requirements. The other post-secondary indicators, dual credit, course completion, if they're enrolled in any kind of higher ed classes, and then our Texas enrollment without development education courses. Any questions on any of that? Flip to another section. All right, the next section is about our student information and this starts on page twenty-seven. So twenty-seven through twenty-nine is our student enrollment and it's broke down by various groups. We can look at it by grade level, we can look at by ethnicity, we can look at by population, student population, special programs. So there's various ways to look at it there. And then on page thirty, it is the same thing with the staff. So we're looking at them by ethnicity groups. We can look at them by how many years they taught, by their degrees. It tells you their average salary that we have. And it's also comparison to the district, from the district to the state, so you can see that across as well. And then the last part of that section is our student enrollment by each special population. And that is the last page, thirty-two. I went through that very quickly. Is there any questions about the TAPER part of that before I go to the next indicator? All right, the next thing is our financial information. And so these are now tagged by color, so the green tab is going to be the next pages, one through five of the green tab. It's all of your financial information. It's a lot of this you've seen through all the financial reports that Mr. Bright has been giving you over the course of the year, but this is just looking at it as a whole for two thousand twenty-one. This is the district one you have and like I said, in your PowerPoint, in your board book, you can link and look actually at the campuses if you want to. The next tab is PMS. This is our district accreditation status. Because of COVID, they still are not giving us, re-accrediting anybody. So I've enclosed the letter from TEA so that you can see it, but basically they're just telling us it's been suspended right now until our current school year. So for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, at the end of the year, they will go back to doing the accreditation. The yellow tab is the district improvement plan. This is consistent of all of our, it starts with the needs assessment, so that's the first part you're going to see in there. And then it goes into our goals and objectives and all the strategies that are in place to meet those goals and objectives. You can also see the little green circles by each strategy. They'll tell you how we feel we're doing in meeting that strategies, meeting the goal using that strategy. So we just formatively check that throughout the school year. The next part is the orange tab. And this is the report on violent or criminal incidents. It's also referred to as the unsafe school choice option information. This report is just going to tell you if we've had any, if you look at those indicators that are cross on it, those are the ones that are reported in PMS to be violent or criminal. And we have to note them and it's something that they watch very closely. But also want you to be aware that if a student is charged with a felony that's not related to something on the campus, it still can be reported under this because of the student's status. So it doesn't necessarily have to be something that happened on campus. The next tab is the blue tab. And this is the information on our students that go to college immediately, oh, I'm going to form my thing. Immediately after they graduate. So if they graduate, this was from they graduated in twenty-one and they enrolled in a college, immediately that fall. So you can see our numbers, students that do that. And the last tab, the purple tab, these are our House Bill III goals. These were adopted by you as the board back in two thousand eighteen and we've had to progress and monitor them every year since then. COVID threw a little kink in them and we kind of had to adjust from there, but we had to do them for the early elementary, early childhood goals and then our CCMR goals. So you see them at the very beginning and the very end. And so you can see how we've progressed towards meeting those. So that is all of the information that I have for you tonight. We will have the TAPER and all of that posted on the website so anybody can access it. That would like to, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions after you've had some time to go through because it is a lot of information. And again, in your board book, you can get deeper with the campuses if you'd like. So, does anybody have any questions right now that I can answer? Thank you.
Questions?
I just have a comment, I don't know if it's a question, but I was looking and I might need to just look at it further and say anything. So we have the public education, like as we're breaking down page, I don't know what page it is. But anyway, we have a hundred and twenty-six out of two hundred and fifty-nine not found what they are doing actors after high school.
You were looking at that, where they go to college?
College and career readiness.
Right. Yeah, that's read correctly. There's a hundred, they don't know if they enrolled somewhere. They're unable to find them. So they may not have gone to college or it wasn't reported to us. And the higher, the Board of Higher Education is the one that collects this data. Make sure to be totally talking around it. That's all. I only printed, I only printed a page with El Campo on it. It's a very lengthy document because it has everybody, but I did, I did not.
Maybe you just ran it.
Yeah, well, maybe, I don't know.
Questions? There being no more further business to come before the board of this special meeting, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Independent School Board of Trustees is now called to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted in accordance with Section five-five-one point oh four-three of the Texas Government Code with regards to public notice of public meetings and that there is a quorum of members present at this time. We'll rise from the open prayer and be pleased to leave.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you this evening just to come here and do the work of the school district and just to take care of the business that is at hand. We ask you for your guidance. We thank you for the rain today and all the blessings that you bestow upon us. We ask that you just help us to keep what's important and most important here in our district, our people at the forefront and the basis of all of our decisions that we make here. Watch over us and lead us home safe, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brings us to public comment. At regular meetings, the board allows fifteen minutes to hear persons who desire to make comments to the board that are not related to items on the agenda on the night of the regular board meeting. Has anyone signed up for public comment? Public testimony. The board also provides an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding an item on the agenda for any open meeting of the Board of Trustees during the board's consideration of the agenda item, provided that the requirement of written notice has been met. Has anyone signed up? There being none, we'll move on to our recognition, the best part of the night. Dr. Callahan, would you?
Yes, board members, we have our STAR students here today, which are the speakers, thespians, and readers. Miss, oh, there's Mr. Ostradowski, there you are. Come on in, sir, you're up.
So this is Christopher Luer and Juliana Vazquez. These are two of the three students that went to state in UIL Student Congress. And it's a competition that is exactly what the name says. They sit in an active body like a US Congress session where they debate and vote on bills or resolutions that they elect onto a docket. At the regional level where we started, El Campo clinched two of the three advancing spots to state and then we also had an alternate, which was Hannah Printel, who unfortunately had to work tonight, so she couldn't be with us. But we went to state. The first round at Simmons was held at UT at their teaching center. And then finals was held at the state Capitol, one of their many rooms that they have, their auditoriums. So Ms. Vazquez here placed fifteenth in Foray Division in the state of Texas. And Christopher Luer placed in the top thirty-seven students for Foray Student Congress in the state of Texas. So, and then Hannah got. And then Hannah Printel clinched the alternate to state, this being the first year she's ever done it. So that was pretty exciting as well. So we had a fun trip in Austin, acted like congressmen.
We'd like you to get your picture taken. Come around here.
Yeah.
Christopher, congratulations. Come on up there and get your picture in there, Mr. Russell. Come on.
All right, one, two, three. Can I get on this way?
Good job, thanks for being here. Thank you very much, congratulations. So now we have Mr. Hand and the middle school one X place, so Nathan, come on up.
Mr. Callahan, school board members, thank you so much for recognizing the one X place students this evening. Our production of Dorothy Meets Alice competed at the Industrial ISD Middle School One X Place Festival on Thursday, December eighth, and we won second place overall honors. And we were so very proud of that, very proud of that against the five competing schools. So our cast is here in attendance tonight to be recognized for those. There's some that are not here due to the equipment weather. So we have Jeremy Darsa, sixth grade.
And what was your character?
I played the dormouse.
We had Sage Corn, eighth grade, queen of birds. Cash Chisholm, sixth grade, played Jetson, and I think he had a brief thank you real quick.
Oh, hi, my name's Cash Chisholm. I am in sixth grade and I would like to thank you all for honoring us tonight. I would also like to thank Mr. Hand for bringing out the best in us. And I would like to thank Ms. Fellers and all of our other principals for celebrating the arts.
Wyatt Reese is in seventh grade, he was the ace of spades. Nick Fernandez is in seventh grade, he was the scarecrow. Kaitlin Nansen is seventh grade and she was the white rabbit. And we have Graylee Pope is in sixth grade and she was Alice. Again, we had a few cast members that could not be here due to equipment weather. The individual acting honors were awarded to Marky Markort, who was a mat hatter. He could not be here and he was All-Star cast. Honorable mention All-Star cast was awarded to Cash Chisholm and Nick Fernandez. So we were very proud of our actors at El Campo Middle School. Thank you so much.
Pass the test on the names here. Everybody's not here. Avery? There you go. Nick? Joey's not here. Jeremy? Mercedes? Marky Markort?
That was Ari.
Is she?
Nope.
Caitlin? Jayden? No. Graylee?
Graylee.
And you? Wyatt? Good job. All right, let's get this, good picture.
Well, I have to squeeze, squeeze in the other three.
There you go. Perfect.
One, two, three.
Good job. Thank you so much. This story are all our teachers here?
Didn't get a chance to turn around, so.
Hey, Ms. Reese.
I know Ms. Prohoda's.
Oh, hey, I got them, sorry.
Yeah, we're more recognition.
Yep, you do, I'm just waiting to get all the teachers in. Okay. Amanda's not here? Is she coming?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
You did right there, actually.
Well, board members, we are proud to recognize our first recipients of the Remarkable Rice Bird. This particular month, the Remarkable Rice Bird was chosen based upon building relationships and capturing hearts. It goes beyond just the capturing kids' hearts expectation and really focuses on the teachers who show their hearts to the kids and the staff. They incorporate this into their curriculum, they build relationships through connections and mentoring, and they create a feeling of belonging and they invest their personal time. And so we've recognized three of them. Amanda Acosta is not here.
She should be coming out, she's in her home. No Amanda Acosta.
She didn't say she wasn't able to come, but maybe.
I'll just tell you about Amanda first. She was nominated, a parent stated, "My child was terrified of math." Ms. Acosta embraced this young lady's fears and went beyond and began to tutor her. Now her daughter is a math tutor herself. Ms. Acosta makes her students feel comfortable and accepted. She invests the time and energy to build teacher and student relationships. So then we also have Laura Prohoda from Hutchins. This is what was said about Laura, that she is the epitome of a heart captureer. She lets everyone know she is glad they are here and present in the building. Ms. Prohoda captures the hearts of students and colleagues alike. And when we recognized her in front of her peers, there was a, there was a lot of Kleenex going around. I will tell you that. So, thanks Laura. Do you want to say anything? I know you said I wasn't there, put you on the spot right now.
I just appreciate the honor and it's hard to just pick two or three of us because I think our whole district works hard at capturing kids' hearts every day. So it is an honor, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, I have to testify, she has both of my grandsons and she still has a smile on her face. I love it. Thank you.
Well, I'm just real proud of her because she told me to make sure I don't have to say anything. I just couldn't pass it up. And then we have from Northside, Brittany Reeves, and this is what was said about Brittany. She embodies each aspect of the Remarkable Rice Bird category. She is our ray of sunshine. She calls each student by name and recognizes something awesome about them each and every day. Her classroom is a shining star for capturing kids' hearts and a positive culture. So, Brittany, congratulations.
I appreciate it, thank you, ditto.
And let me just tell you, Amanda and Alicia, Demetrick, myself, and the principal from each of the campuses got to go into these teachers' classrooms and the joy that came across the students' faces from watching their teachers get recognized was awe inspiring, I will just tell you. It was a great, great honor. I appreciate all the work Alicia's done in helping us, help us recognize our teachers and try to capture their hearts with appreciation. Congratulations. Come on, let's get a picture, yeah.
All right, one, two, three.
Great job.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. And now, so that everybody recognizes, we want to make sure that you as board members understand the appreciation and the recognition you deserve. And so, Mr. Russell has not only served as president, but he's been on the board for fourteen years. Anthony Doritick is the vice president, been on the board for ten years. David Vallejo is the secretary, been on the board for three years. Rich Dubrock is a member of the board and been on the board for four years. Ed Irwin, also a member and has served for four years. Susan Hobbits is a member and been on the board for three years. And Kathy Smith is the youngest of them all. She's a member with only two years' experience, but I don't know what else to tell you all except that from what the principals and they showered you with gifts today, it doesn't match what we feel for you, but it is a small token of our appreciation. So thanks for everything you do for the district, for all the students, and for each and every one of our employees. I'm deserving of the recognition. Anyone want to speak for the board? I'll say thank you. I think everybody wants to say thank you for all the gifts that we've gotten. We don't, obviously, we never expect anything, but y'all always give us more than we deserve and we appreciate it.
I'd like to say as a board member, I'm proud of y'all. I mean, we're all Rice Birds and we're all in it together and I just think y'all do a great job and make us proud. Thank you.
Ditto.
Alright, so that will take us to?
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda. General item number four is our consent agenda. According to local policy, BE, a consent agenda is provided that includes items of a routine and reoccurring nature. We can act on those under one action item. Board members have been furnished background information for the items listed in the consent agenda. If a board member wants to pull out an individual item, we can do that this time. Is there anybody who would like to do that?
Well, board members, I would like to draw your attention to all the information about the trustee election on May 6th. Um, all the voting, uh, information is in your packet, and we also have a large TASB policy of date 1/20, except for two, which I think I explained in the, um, board update, everything else is a legal policy, so, um, very little, very little, uh, input from the board is, is needed on those, since it's all legal requirements.
I was wondering, on the financial reports, are we still having software protocols? All we got was a, uh?
Next, next month you will actually be getting your first one.
Okay.
We haven't had them in, uh, since the fall, but actually, you'll be getting one next month.
Okay.
That's taken care of.
Questions? I'll seek a, a, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hobbit, second by Mr. Dubrock. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That will take us to business and operations, safety and security update.
That would be Mr. Wells and Mr. Freeman. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. Freeman. Mark, if you'd stand up. Mark is, uh, this is his first, uh, major responsibility to each and every one of you, but to be here, and so we're, we're excited to have Mark on board. He's hit the ground running, talked to all the principals about things, and, um, I would like to commend not only Mark, but all of the principals. Mark did a great job getting everyone to school and home from school, avoiding the weather today. Uh, he was critical in keeping the, the principals abreast of weather. Uh, in addition to that, all of our principals that you might know, we have a lockdown at, um, Mayette, MLRC, and Northside today. Um, everything was handled well, I gotta say, appreciation and kudos go to the chief, who had, who kept me abreast of the situation from the initial through the end, and it allowed our communication efforts to, to be very strong within the district, so we felt everyone was safe, it was precautionary. Um, we sent, uh, thanks to Valerie for sending out information over several different entities of the website and parent portals type things. I don't know where else did you send it, Valerie?
It was parents and text message, phone call.
So we, we tried to do that and keep everyone, uh, aware. The principals did a great job keeping everyone safe, and so, um, safety and security wise, um, Demetrius will go from there about everything we're doing around the district.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Actually, I spoke to VCS today because we've had a lot of teachers asking questions about the progress of the Aphone and the, the, the key fob systems. So ninety percent of the job is complete at, uh, at Mayette, ninety percent is complete at, um, at Northside. They're just waiting for programming on those two campuses. Uh, they're still working at the high school, they're still installing the hardware. The thing that actually took, um, that took them a long time in our district was, uh, we have some tilt wall construction, and, and when you're trying to run wires, you know, it, it, it kind of, you know, changes the dynamic when you have to start using all the conduit and different things the way that they were actually trying to do it. So, uh, the gate, the turnstile gate that is going to be at the stadium, uh, the installation date is, uh, sixteen days is what he told me, today on the phone, he said, "In sixteen days, we will be starting the project at the stadium for your, uh, turnstile gate." We're also in the process of making sure that our campuses are continuing to, uh, follow their procedures, their safety procedures. The state has also let us know that we are back on the, on the radar, and they will be doing another door audit. They have actually notified us and let us know that, uh, sometime in the coming weeks, uh, to be prepared for the door audit. Once again, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Freeman for, uh, I want to echo what Mr. Callahan said about his, uh, safety and getting things taken care of today, uh, and ensuring our kids got home safe. Uh, as far as, uh, Hutchins, Hutchins, they actually have some of the, uh, stuff, uh, on the outside for the Aphones. They are about seventy-five percent ready to go there, and once again, their, their big, their bulk of their work left to do on the installation process, uh, for VCS is actually at the high school. At the completion of the, uh, the key fob system and the door security system, at, after that's complete, then we will start the next phase, which will be the installation of, um, bathroom, uh, sensors, okay, vape sensors.
Any questions?
And what campuses, the vape sensors going all the way down?
We're gonna go, we're going north side up, north side up. Probably put some in the administration building as well.
I saw, I saw Mr. Callahan.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I think we know who we'll catch.
Well?
It was good while it lasted.
Uh, that brings us to the curriculum instruction information about the special education transition.
And that's Ms. Anderson?
Yes, some handouts for you guys. So we had transition, uh, a transition fair prior to, um, yes, it's two, two handouts. Prior to COVID, we had a transition fair, and, um, we had smaller turnouts, and we're bringing it back again this year, and it's a, um, a fair for all students in special education, well, mainly for their parents. So what we're trying to do is reach out to parents and let them know, um, what they need to do to prepare for their children's future. So for example, guardianship is something that we should not wait until a child is in high school to consider. Those are things that cost money, and so parents need to know that upfront. We have, uh, presentations from Texana, and the social security administration, uh, administration is coming to do a presentation for parents on what that looks like and how they need to, um, set that up. We have a bank that's coming to really talk to parents about what they can do with that social security money that they get for their children, and then we've also reached out to local businesses that offer resources for our parents. So we just wanted to let you all know, if you're available on February 3rd, we'll be at the Civic Center from 10 to 6. We have door prizes that will be handed out. We also have, um, uh, different people that are doing some different presentations throughout the day. And so we'd love for you to come, but we also just want to raise awareness for our community so that they know, you know, what, what's going on, that this is something that we're going to do every single year to provide information and resources to parents. So I just wanted to let y'all know that it's something we did in the past, but we're bringing it back to make sure that parents have resources, um, available to them.
This is awesome.
Yeah, we're really excited. I think right now we have about between seventeen and twenty vendors that are planning to come, so. Hopefully it'll grow every year, and we'll just keep, uh, getting additional rooms at the Civic Center to be able to provide information to parents, so.
Are some of the vendors, like, so that they could provide jobs? I mean, like, like I said, there's.
They are. So Splashly said they were coming because they have, uh, you know, they can provide jobs to our kiddos, and then we have some different technical schools, um, the A&amp;M Pathways program couldn't come on February 3rd, but they said, "Count them in from now on." They'll come and make sure that parents have information, because to get into that program, students have to make videos and, with their applications, and so parents need to be aware of that, and it's not something that just happens their senior year. And so, um, yeah, we're trying to, to reach out to different people that may, again, it's either jobs that they may be able to get within the community, or are they looking for other resources, you know, as they're preparing transition, so. Anyway, just wanted to let y'all know what was going on.
Thank you, very positive, things like that, I appreciate that. Any questions? That'll take us to the curriculum and instruction, consider approval of the 2023-2024 school calendar.
Yes, so I have placed a copy of the proposed calendar in front of you, um, it's also linked into the board book, but I thought it would be nice for you to have a copy that would get easier to read. Um, this is a calendar that we're proposing for you to approve. Um, we've taken input from the DEWIT committee, from our leadership team. We sent out a survey to the staff, asking them specific questions of what their preferences were on different areas, um, to help us narrow it down. Um, we also brought it to you in December to see if there was any parameters you highly wanted us to consider, and then we also went back to the principals as well again to start looking at it. Really wanted to consider what is important to students and teachers alike, so we're trying to find that balance, and make sure that we're giving something to you that we feel will be very effective for our teachers and students. Some of the highlights or some of the differences, I guess, is we're looking at a start date on August 15th, and so one of the big things that was pushed to us was we want to get out before Memorial Weekend, okay? So with that in mind, we have to work backwards, right? So to get a start date, um, of the, we were looking at the August 9th date, but we pushed it back to August 15th. So teachers still have to work one hundred eighty-seven days, so when you look at the, with the end date in mind and go backwards, you can see that they've got more days now before the actual first day of school to do prep, um, which we think is going to be a plus for them, so we're not trying to cram everything into our traditional five days. We now have actually nine days built in there, so.
Well, you have it for staff development, is that, are you gonna allow them work days?
So, I understand. So what we did is we put one day guaranteed, for sure, the fourteenth we marked as a work day. However, the campuses, it's hard to say another one for sure, be, what day it would be, because every campus is going to be different on what day they need it to be. So yes, we want them to have more work days, um, because we do know how important that is, um, so there, there's a high chance. Or half days, or parts, you know, like, give them an opportunity to go, if they plan something, give them an opportunity to go to their rooms and put that together. So yes, I, we understand the importance of that.
I think, Ms. Smith, it's also important for, for us to recognize as a district that if there is staff development, so if there's something that the principals believe is beneficial to instruction, then they're supposed to do that in the morning, followed by, with an entire afternoon after lunch for the professional, well, it's not work, it's a, it's, it's more of a professional learning opportunity for them to have time to work as their grade level team or, um, as a vertical team and a vertical alignment, but it should all be geared towards helping instruction, not necessarily just putting up decorations in your classroom, although that we're trying to do that, but that we're, we have not done full days of professional development. So I, I think this is the time that if you, if you've got things that you would like to share with the, the principals, they would, it would be important for them to hear.
Okay.
The boards.
Principles. Teacher for twenty-seven years, it takes time, and I mean, it takes time, and it's so stressful, because you do these professional developments, and you don't have time to go back and do it, and just, and you're thinking, okay, I've got to do this, I've got to do this and that, and then they'll say, "We have a meeting in ten minutes." So just remember, teachers want to do the best they can, and y'all know that, I'm just preaching to the choir. So anyway, I just know I've always wished that, it's always stressful.
I think the nine days is going to be beneficial, you know, instead of the five, that we're going to be able to give them some, a little more of that time here.
Thank y'all.
It'll be hard to fill nine days.
Yeah. I'm gonna come watch y'all, see what y'all do for nine days.
How many minutes is this?
So the total minutes is seventy-seven thousand, three hundred sixty.
So if we have a winter event that's three days long, how many, how many?
So we're all, it's just shy of four days over on minimum minutes.
We have four days to play with?
Yes. This current calendar, we have six.
What do you, what's the requirement?
Seventy, seventy-five thousand, six hundred.
Yeah, so we've, we've got four days.
So we're.
The thing that, that got us, one year that made it difficult was the, the ice storm.
And it freezes you.
And then hurricane, hurricanes are a challenge because the governor doesn't give us a free pass on that, because we're not a coastal county. Is that?
Has there been a year where four wasn't enough?
Yes.
I can't recall the time.
The, uh, Harvey.
The Harvey year.
Harvey year was a nightmare, because we almost had to call everybody back and have a day of school that we, that nobody knew about, and I bet, I bet, uh, our students responded well to that.
But is that? That's how many days we had over, or that was before?
It was, it was, it was the start of the school year.
No, it was minutes.
It was still minutes.
Yeah, it was minutes.
It was, it was Harvey, the Harvey year, we had enough minutes for everybody except for the seniors, because we were graduating the seniors early, uh, and.
And it was the ice storm year, I don't think it was Harvey.
This ice storm.
Yeah, it may have been ice storm. It was ice storm year.
Is that, so you're, are, are we good, are we?
I, I, I think we're good unless we've got this catastrophic.
Yeah.
You know, that we just, you just, you never know, um.
Look what's happened on the west coast.
You don't know.
Now, if you get, some of the, sometimes you get the governor, like, frees you up, you know, like you get days that are recognized as natural disaster or whatever.
Right. In the past, you know, before we went to this minutes and we were still doing days, we used to use, like, our fair day as a, as a possible day, so that's always an option too, if we get to that point and we have to go there, you know, um, not that we want to do that, but.
Also a popular option. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the calendar.
In the past, we've always had a parent teacher conference day in October, um, and so we did take that out, and we actually are giving the teachers a holiday, we put a holiday in there, so there is an October holiday that we've never had, um. The parent teacher conferences are important, so we don't want to, we're still going to do them, we're still gonna, um, but we're going to do it kind of in a big window of time and give teachers time to try to meet with all their parents or have conversations via phone with their parents, um, we're gonna do, try to do it a little differently, so, um, but we still want to recognize the importance of that, especially it's a big turnout at the, at the elementaries, and, uh, having that connection with parents is important, so. We did add a couple half days in there that we didn't have in the past, so we added one right before Thanksgiving, and we added one right before spring break, so those are also new. The rest of it is pretty similar to our year.
I'm just looking to be able to see, because of where Easter falls in March, and so they moved the fair back a couple of weeks, but that's not going to affect start testing, is it?
It shouldn't, because it will be that actual, when we come back, that sixteenth is the window it will start. We should be good.
The Fair Board has been very, very communicative, um, between the Fair Board and the area superintendents. We have kept in constant contact through this entire process. So we started back in December, I think I generated an email, uh, back in December to get, get it on everybody's, uh, plate, so that we started thinking about it, and they have not quote unquote "set the date," but they've set the date.
Yeah, okay.
I know that it's well thought out, and I appreciate y'all spending the time to do that, so.
It's a lot of work. It is, because when to do this, it affects that, to do that, it affects this, so it's.
Right, it's not as simple, it's not as simple as just throwing days into a calendar, I said, absolutely.
Mr. Russell, I make a motion to approve the 2023-24 school calendar.
Motion by Mr. Irwin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Doritick. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, that takes us to business and operations, discussion and consideration of purchasing cafeteria tables, that's on 374 in your board book.
Okay. It's you? Yes, okay. So, uh, we, uh, have re- Okay, so, uh, we, uh, have re, looked at three bids for cafeteria tables. Uh, we're looking at replacing the cafeteria tables at Myatt. We've already done it at Hutchins. We're going to do them at Northside and the middle school is what the proposal is for, for all the cafeteria tables to be expended with Esser funds.
In your board book, there's, uh, information on the specifics of the cafeteria tables. The, the middle school, if I'm not mistaken, is, has round tables now, right?
They have tables, round ones.
No, they have long ones, they have long ones.
Oh, they get around. Oh, then, because we used to have round ones, and they got the long ones.
It was about three years ago.
Yeah.
About three years ago.
So I, uh, this is Esser funds, so that is a kind of a, 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 a material detail here, that it is the Esser money that are, that's being spent. And this is finding ways to apply that to actual needs, so, uh, if anybody has any questions?
What happens to the tables that are there?
Well, the tables that are there will actually be stored. So the big picture is this, Esser funds are going to actually expire. So once they expire, and if we do happen to have an opportunity to build a high school cafeteria, we will already have cafeteria tables.
I mean, they're the same, right?
You know, you know, I mean.
I have a motion by Mr. Dortick, a second on Mr. Dubruck, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same side, motion carries unanimously.
Uh, board members, I recommend we table six B two until after we come out of closed session, so we can talk about real property in, in closed session as allowed under Texas Government Code five five one point oh seven two. So that would be, that would be an action item we would take up after.
After closed session.
Closed session, yes, sir.
That'll take us to curriculum instruction, class rank, and programs of study.
And that's Mr. Flinough. And Ms. Starry.
You know, we've met, uh, Ms. Starry and the counselors and I, kind of looked at what we're doing and this for, excuse me, and the policy. And I think what's kind of been an issue before is maybe policy wasn't applied as it should have been. And so we've worked on some of the procedures to make sure that it is applied as it's written and we don't have, you know, a rule for you, a rule for him, a rule for them, that it is equitable across that for all students right now. Um, with the changes TEAs are looking at in form of accountability, looking at the programs of study and CCMR. Right now, the TEA is telling us they may delay what they were thinking about with that. Um, what they were proposing was going to affect the classes students would have to take. Now, starting next year, all students to be considered, CCMR, in regards to CTE, they're going to have to have, if I have an IDC that's a NCCR core, I'm going to have to have a level two or higher course that corresponds in the two programs of studies that now align to that. In the past, anyone could have that IDC and they counted and checked that box. Now it's going to be strictly aligned in specific programs of study. So like NCCR core only goes into, uh, construction, carpentry, and applied agricultural engineering. So a student would have, if they have that and have nothing else, they're going to have to have that one of the two courses that will offer them going forward. Um, but with that, with the accountability, I don't know what the TEA is going to do. I don't know what they're going to push out, what the legislature's meeting at right now. And kind of what I recommended in the fall, and Alicia and I talked about, is let's wait, see what TEA comes out with, what the legislature comes out with. Um, we're looking to make sure everything is applied, as I said, equitably, and so that there's not. Couple of the changes we've made is juniors, for freshmen and sophomores, they get their GPA. They do not get their class rank. Students will not get their class rank until the beginning of their junior year. So we're looking at people that are trying to play a GPA game and trying to see about that. We're kind of taking that off the table for a little bit as well. Go learn, learn the best you can, take the courses you need to take, and let's not have that concern, right? And so that, that's something we're working on as well with that.
One other thing, um, I see what you said about the programs of study. The last thing we want to do is come to you with a recommendation of let's change our class rank policy, weighted courses to narrow them possibly down to core and take out some of these elective classes. And then we find out with these completions for the CCMR end of it, we need to go back and make a change. So we don't want to make a change and then have to go back and change it. We'd rather wait, see what TEA is going to say about these programs of study, what we're going to have to do and make sure that we don't, by doing one thing, we hurt something else, that's the concern.
How do, how do you think, and I'm not telling you.
Sure.
I disagree, but like, how, how do you think what them saying what's going to count for CCMR, like, how, what does that matter to GPA?
So, go ahead.
If we end up taking a change, making a change right now, right? Let's say one of the things we talked about is only counting four classes. So I'm just going to count, you know, social studies, science, math, and ELAR. And at this time, I would recommend, certainly Spanish, you know, but sometimes you do that. If we did that, now, unless we're going to say that there's going to be a common denominator, we're only going to count sixteen or we're going to count more. So now I may, if we count more than sixteen, right? Those kids that want to play that GPA game, now I'm not going into CTE. I'm not going to take a program of study, I won't be considered a completer. So when we look at the federal accountability, which is where that comes into a lot with the completers in CTE, and then also now the states kind of adapted that as well, that's going to affect us. Our, our CCMR number will drop, and so in, what is that, uh, one, uh, what do they call it now?
The, the domain one?
Yeah, domain one, sorry, domain one scores will drop.
But then, so, if you were just counting the core, you think that's going to keep kids from completing?
They have an opportunity to take more core classes. They, they prefer to take the core classes because they're the only ones that are weighted versus the elective classes that we, we want them to get the program of study, we want them to get the endorsement, we want them to get the, uh, certification if they're on that path. And so we don't want to, we don't want them to be stuck in the, well, I do this, I can't get that. So I'm going to have to take core classes because I need to make sure that I'm sitting in my class rank area. We want to, we don't want to put that pressure on them, so.
But are they really?
We can come up with a system that meets both needs, that's the goal.
Are they really having to make that choice between core classes and, and?
In the current system, no.
No.
In the current system, they're not. In the current system, they are, uh, able to take that. I mean, so I think, uh, they told me last year that, uh, the valedictorian, I think, was, you know, had gone through, completed a program of study, was certified as a welder, if I'm not mistaken, right? Was it the Val or Sal or someone was?
It wasn't the Val.
Nope. So, I mean, so looking at that, and that's the only thing, we, we.
Well, let me ask.
In the past, they built a great CTE program here, I would hate to see that deployed.
So, I, I think, I don't, I think all of us hear what you're saying. Uh, I don't think the, I don't think adjusting your GPA, uh, the way your district figures your GPA necessarily has to attack the seat, the, the cake program. I think there's a lot of, there are a lot of districts right now that have a, have a GPA, uh, criteria.
The class rank.
Class rank, GPA criteria, that actually complements these other programs that are, that some, some schools don't count, you know, wave the flags that, hey, this class doesn't count for GPA, you should take it. It's fun, it's something you're interested in, you get a free pass on, on this deal. Um, you mentioned several times the GPA game.
Well, there's some.
And that's, but that, but that's what, that's what this board twice has voted to eliminate. And, and it seems like we've created, that, that hasn't happened. And we've created the biggest game that, where there are basically no rules. I mean, it's just the wild west out there. If we're waiting on the, on something from TEA to come back, and we push this thing back and the eighth grader, the incoming eighth graders, which we tried to solve this for the incoming sophomores, and we did it once and we voted on it three times. We tried to solve it for the juniors, we didn't. We tried to solve it for the sophomores, swing and a miss, we, with directives from the board each time, and we didn't do it. The eighth graders are going to sign up for classes. They have to be notified of the rules of the game, of what's, what they're going to be doing. This is, this is all, we're, we're not talking about changing it for the seniors, we're not talking about changing it for the juniors, sophomores. Talking about the, the eighth graders leaving El Campo Middle School. That's who this is going to take, this is how that's going to shake out. If we wait and wait, all of a sudden, we've signed up for classes, we've gone over there, we have some type of orientation, we've sent out letters to the, to the parents, and we've kicked the can down the road one more time, which means we have to do this whole game thing for another four years.
Well, I don't think we have to, to do that. If, even if I go through as an eighth grader, go through the course selection process, right? I'm going to be locked in to some certain things, right? If I go into band, then I've got to take an English class, I've got to take a science class, I've got to take a math class, I've got to take a social studies class. If they end up taking speech or health or, you know, speech or, uh, dollars and cents. So now I'm sitting at about seven courses, I don't have a lot of other room with that.
But what we're not talking about, if, if we end up kicking the can down the road.
No, I'm saying we can still make a decision in the summer, and now.
But when these, when these kids get to be sophomores, we're taking online, you know, geology over the Christmas break.
So, so that's, so that's a different thing, so that's.
It's all the same thing.
But we're talking about accessibility versus GPA. So we can, we can, we can fix accessibility easily, we're already talking about doing that.
It's about the grading, it's about the GPA grading policy of the district. And that's what we've tried to fix three times and voted on twice to fix it, and we haven't done it.
Well, I think that comes to with, we need to look at what we're going to allow students to take because it's not necessarily a question of what they're taking in El Campo High School as much as I think is what they're taking outside of El Campo High School. I think that's where we need to make sure that the rules are applying to everybody, right?
Well, I think the rules that we have in place are applying to everybody, we just don't have any rules.
Here, here's the, the, the biggest issue is you will never ever take away a GPA game. Okay, so that, that, that part will, the, the, the whole issue, what we really tried to fix was we had a situation a few years ago to where students were allowed to bring in multiple outside classes. So what we wanted to do was limit that to two, because they could, they could not take certain classes that we offered and they were able to bring in more than other, and, and they were bringing those in as weighted courses. So what you wanted to do was you wanted to limit the number of weighted courses, so there's.
Outside weighted courses.
Outside weighted courses, because the whole, the whole GPA thing is, like, the, the trick to it is minimizing the denominator. So if you minimize the denominator, the, like, if, if I'm, if I'm a student and I'll, if I figure out how to minimize my denominator and have the most weighted courses I can, it gives me an advantage over everybody else.
So that, so let's stop there, let me, let, and go back to what y'all were saying. So, because I agree with that, but how does that, I, I don't see how our current system encourages a kid to complete those CCMRs, because those aren't weighted courses.
They're not.
Some are, there's a dual credit welding course that they can take, and they actually can get up to, uh, twelve hours, I believe, in, through dual credit welding. And that in and of itself, then earns them that CCMR point.
And that, that I understand, but by and large, most of our kids that, that are competing for class rank are not taking those courses anyway.
No.
So, so, like, if that's why we're not wanting to make a decision from now on what it is, I don't, that's what I didn't understand.
The majority of those kids are in career prep.
Correct.
So the majority.
Because it reduces the denominator.
Right.
I understand that, no, I get that, I get that that's what it is, but I don't see how that, our reasoning for not wanting to change the system now.
Because I don't want to have to come back and do it later. I don't want to come up here and say, hey, this is, this is the fix, and then have to come back and say, I'm sorry, I screwed up, I was wrong. TEA's changed this and it's not the fix, so.
Our, our, take East Bernard ISD that has a grading policy that, that is really defined and, and you know, has to be during the school day, no outside things that we, we've talked about doing and voted on doing here that didn't get done. But are they sitting here shaking in their boots that there, this TEA thing's going to drop and they're just going to have to rewrite their whole team? Is Columbus High School doing the same thing? Is Leadville doing the same thing? Because they all have, and K D ISD has, has a grading policy that, that's progressive, but, but we're the only ones that are sitting here with.
I think what you're asking, James, we can do right now, because to me, it's what we're allowing students to bring in or allowing them to take.
That's, that's the whole issue.
So, instead of saying we're only going to allow these courses to count in the GPA, we're allowing these kids to take these classes. If we reduce what we allow them to, to take outside of what we offer and we keep that more narrow for them to get the weight, we can do that right now. And we're all, we've already made a few changes in there to really define that in the course catalog versus to what it said in the past, because I agree with you.
Referring to is you may have had a kid that was taking a face-to-face class, right? In a dual-credit environment. It was difficult. Well, then they go and they get one and they're taking it online, and that was a Louis.
Dual-credit recovery.
And that's what we've lived, we've already stopped all of that.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's over. So we had a kid drop a, a, an AP course, and they said, oh, said, no, they're going in there. Put the number thirty-one, thirty-two for that teacher, but they're not going to go take it in credit recovery. That's not the same, so we've already ended all of that. And, and with TEAs, what they're doing, I, I'm not shaking in my boots, I've argued with the commissioner and I'll argue with him again because what he's doing, I think, is wrong, right? He's got to, you know, like you're talking about how we start things with the freshman class. When he first came out, he was going to basically do a ex post facto law, and it was going to apply to the graduates this year, and that was wrong. You don't change the rules in the middle of the game, right, in between first and second half, and that's what he was doing. He's now talking about delaying it, and it won't affect the graduates of twenty-three, the class of twenty-three, but it will now for twenty-four, but that wasn't the rules when the class of twenty-four started. That's still wrong, in my book, right? And I think we need to do some of that. So it's, I just want to make sure we have the best thing that we want. The other thing I've talked to Mr. Callahan and to Alicia about is I'm fine with getting, you know, she and I have talked with the counselors and some of the APs, but having another committee, Mr. Callahan, you know, some of y'all, y'all want to sit down and let's look at it and get the best thing that fits El Campo High School and the community, you know? And let's hear the voices that we need to hear with that. Clip, go ahead, go ahead.
To what Demetrius was mentioning earlier, and this, I think this is the biggest hiccup I have is, so walk me through this, so a kid could go outside of the district, purchase enrollment at WCJ or somewhere and take some dual-credit classes that he could use in, she could use in college, but it's also af, affects their GPA here, correct?
Two is how it's firmly written.
One, two, that's fine. So that class has to cost something, correct?
It does.
So the wealthy kid has an advantage over a kid that can't, family can't afford to buy that class, yes or no?
Correct, but we, we've always paid.
Okay, so it's even?
It's even.
Okay.
If a kid can't afford it, we pay. Hold on just a second, I think that you're saying it is even if, if there is a hundred percent knowledge of every student that you're going to pay for that and they can do that, and I would guarantee you that that is part of the, the game that I'm hearing all of us talk about right now. Because I do not believe that every child knows that if they want to take dual-credit course, that El Campo is going to pay for it.
Well, I guarantee you their parents don't pay.
I think that's a true statement.
So I'm just, I'm just saying that I, what, what I.
We didn't always, oh, that hasn't always been the case.
No.
There was a times, there was a time.
So, and I'm all, I'm not, I'm all for kids, I mean, it's cheaper to take a course at WCJC than it is University of Texas. Go for it, but why on earth does it have to fit into the El Campo High School's GPA?
It does, right? So that's the whole thing. We can look at what we want to count, how we want it to work, and say, these are the only. It does, right? So that's the whole thing. We can look at what we wanna count, how we want it to work, and say, these are the only courses, if I've got a teacher that, and my opinion was if I had someone that could teach it face-to-face, I always felt that was better, right? So we have someone that can teach, uh, dual-credit US history, right? We're working on someone that can maybe teach dual-credit math, or maybe they can teach a dual-credit calculus or Greek math. And if we get those, those would definitely be things that we would count, right? I think the government and economics fits well in there too. Um, and then we offer some other AP classes. There's advantages to dual-credit, there are advantages to AP. It depends on what you're looking at. Uh, my daughter, that's a, I'm a sophomore junior now at, at A&amp;M, she took, um, her Spanish through dual-credit through Victoria College, Spanish one and two. Well, she went into L.I. Health. She didn't need it for a BS. So those were electives. She had to use them. So where she could have gone and taken some easier classes at A&amp;M, her electives are taken up on things that don't affect her GPA. So when she's applying to get into graduate school, that's gonna adversely affect her.
Man, that happens a lot.
Yes, it does, right? If it's an AP course, my other daughter, the oldest one, she had a five in AP English Lit and NP Comp and, and US History, right? So she got to decide if she wanted to use those. She didn't have to because they weren't on transcript. If she wanted to, she used them. If she didn't, she didn't. So those are some of those different advantages. I don't know that we're at the level we need to be of rigor in all of our AP courses to see some of our students be more successful, but that's a, that's a work in progress too.
Well, but I think one thing is important for the board to know, that when you guys were talking to, to this, about this particular issue, you expressed to me that you felt you would have, you would be able to have changes in place for the incoming freshman class of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, correct? Where they would have time to alter their schedule.
Yes. So we could do that in May, June, we'll get that out, and they can still go through with their counselors and change their schedule, yes sir.
Can I ask a, just a clarifying question? So, well, I, in my mind, I'm looking at two different things. I'm looking at what are we allowing to count into the G, to the ranking GPA? And to me, that's something we can walk out, out of this door and fix in a couple days and bring back to you immediately. So if you're talking about what we're allowing, like two courses outside, we can change that, we can bring that back to you. Um, and how we can narrow all of that down. So what, basically, what are we allowing them to do? And then the other part I'm thinking is actually what courses are counting in your GPA for class rank? So right now, we allow all classes to count, and there's some that are weighted. What we were looking at is narrowing what those classes would be that would count, and it wouldn't be all classes anymore. So that's what we're saying. We don't wanna make a recommendation on doing that right now, but I honestly feel like, James, I, what I feel like I'm hearing from you is, it's about what we're allowing to count in there, and that is something that we can go back, I feel pretty confident with, and fix that.
Let me, let me ask it like this. And I, and I don't know, cause when I was in that role, the outside courses were, like, that's when that was first coming out. Like, that wasn't, we only did what was in the school day. If a person wanted the rules of GPA at El Campo High School, could they see that?
Well, we have our cour-, it's in the course catalog, it's in the handbook.
It's in the handbook.
I, I personally would like to, like, be able to say, you know, that we have a recommendation that we want to not count the outside stuff. I don't know, two is kind of an arbitrary number, right? I mean, we just said two because it was something we were comfortable with, or. You know, I would like a recommendation on what we would like it to be.
Well, here, and I think, I think I'll, I'll chime in here, because what I've shared with the three people sitting at the table, which I know they've then gone back and shared with the counselors, is whatever we do, it has to be fair and equitable to every child. We have to have X, these are the courses that count in GPA. So when you're looking at, for example, if you say if they're all count, and you have welding, which has a dual-credit course. Well, if I'm not into welding, if I'm, I'm not gonna ever have access to a dual-credit course.
If you choose to not, you have access, you just don't wanna do it.
Well, but it may not go into my, it may not go into my, um.
Right.
My path.
I understand what you're saying, but you still have, like, you sign up for whatever you wanna sign up for.
Sure.
Well, somebody mentioned y'all getting together, I, at least that's a step in the right direction, cause I feel like we haven't got anywhere since our last vote.
And I don't have, I don't, so, I think the question for me is, I thought we were going with what we talked about in the fall. Like, I thought that's what y'all were coming in, we were gonna get a recommendation on, we're gonna just count the core courses, or whatever we were gonna do. So that, you know, that's not, I'm not, like, upset about it, but I thought that's what we were doing. I didn't know that we were coming off of, we were gonna narrow it down and have a game plan. Cause what we talked about in the fall, I liked. Now, I can't quote it to you verbatim, but, like, I do remember that I thought that was a step in the right direction with what we had discussed, and we did vote on in the fall. So that would be, no?
I, I, what I remember in the fall is saying we were recommending not to make a change right now, let's wait and hold off. Um, I've never received a directive one way or the other to, let's come up with a change. I mean, if we need to make a change, I can come up with a change, but I've never received a directive to do that.
Okay.
Well, so that, I mean, I think I'm definitely, my thought was, is, and what we voted on, we can go back and look at it, it's forever, but that it was core classes with stipulations that those classes, that, you know, they had to, we would exclude things that were in summer school, any course outside the regular school day, unsupervised distance learning, credit recovery, alternative school, those courses were, were, but you got, and I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to write the thing right now, but what I'm saying is, you gotta put, put some things out there that, that makes sense, that put it back in the, put the competition back into the classroom where it's not, oh, man, I, I didn't know you could do that, so now I.
Someone's not gaining.
Yeah.
And I, and I, I do, I most definitely agree with Demetrius. No matter what we do, there will be a game there.
So here, here, here's, here, here will be the new game. The new game will be, if, if ours is, I mean, I'm looking at East Bernard's, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm a kid at East Bernard and I wanna game the system, because it says science, because it basically says the course. It does not, I mean, I haven't read through the whole thing, but it does not state how many. So what I will not do is I will not participate in extracurriculars, and then that's when I'll try to do all of my advanced classes. And I, so now, if, now you basically punish kids that are actually involved.
So, I, I don't disagree, I agree, but I don't agree. And here's what I mean by that. If you, as a student, choose to be totally academic, and you take every science class that's out there, and you ignore all extracurriculars, there is no way a college or university outside of some very elites, MIT, UT, et cetera, the first thing a counselor is gonna tell those kids, where are your extracurriculars? Where are all those other things? So we're throwing out all these hypotheticals here as a group, and we're talking about very specific individual things that we could do. But I got, but I gotta, let me finish. I, I gotta say this. If we're looking at the valedictorian, and that child has taken IPC, biology, chemistry, physics, chemistry two, biology two, physics two, they've taken dual-credit government, economics, US history, and they've taken, and they graduate with thirty-two courses, and every one of them have been this big mountain of extra points. Isn't that your valedictorian? If they've got the kinda grades that they should have? Versus a kid who, who may actually beat them into a college/university because they participated in cross-country in basketball and trap.
I mean, our course requirement, you still gonna have to have.
You still gonna have, you're not still have to have some, somebody like, you gotta have the twenty-six.
And listen, let's, let's also not forget
Yeah, you gotta.
what the high school parking lot looks like at one o'clock.
Right.
The juniors and seniors don't go to school. We're the only school in America that says, oh, everybody go to this, go, go to your work program. But, and they all take it. They all take it. Because it doesn't, it, it reduces the denominator. Now, if you're, if you have a, a grading policy that actually does what Bob says, that kid that wants to play football and, and also be the valedictorian, guess what he, what he can do? He can take those extra science classes his junior, senior year when he's, when, when everybody else is go, is off campus. Working.
Correct.
So there you go. You want, that's not gaming the system, that's actually, that's actually working harder to get ahead. But it's a real class. At, on campus at El Campo ISD.
But the system will be game, no matter how.
It will be.
I get the point. That, that's gonna happen. So here's my, this is, and I'll stop. I wanna have a fair competition for class rank. I want it to be fair and easi- easily understood and not complex, and that I have an advantage on it because you're my kid and I went to college and I know how to do this. Like, I know how to play school. I want it to be a fair system for everybody, and I want what we do to encourage kids to be well-rounded and, and take courses that are gonna benefit them farther down the road. That, and I, that's utopian, I understand, but like, that's what I think about it. It needs to be fair and easily done, easy to understand, and that my kid doesn't have an advantage over somebody that, that finished the third grade. Like, that's, that's, that's where I am on it. So if we can.
Like Amy was saying, if I'm wealthier and I wanna go take more classes, right, you know, if I wanna go have my kid take three or four dual-credit classes in the summer, we're gonna count them all, cause there are some schools that do that.
Right.
And kids will then get those weighted points factored into it, and they can kind of get into those positions, so.
Yeah, I'm not knocking those kids that do that. I mean, that's, good for you, get, get as much education as you can, but when it comes to GPAs, I don't think that's.
Shouldn't work that way.
Correct.
Does anybody else have any comments? Well, any questions from?
That's gonna be a long one at my house.
Here again, I like.
That gets in the paper, it's gonna be a long one at my house.
I'm a little simple, so, and I'm just gonna be straightforward. What are my tasks with doing? Do you want me to come up with one that's going to come up and it's going to be around just qu- framed with the core, and then limit what they can take outside that would be weighted courses? Do we wanna come together?
That's not what I heard. That is not, what I heard was they, 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 the board is tasking us, um, and they like the idea of putting together a committee, and they like the idea of having a representation, and they like the idea of us coming to them in February, no later than March, with a recommendation for a class rank policy, is what I heard.
Yes.
Is that what you heard?
That's what I meant.
Wait, uh, and I think that's perfect. We're about, so, May, April, May is when the middle school kids kinda start.
I think we start course selection a lot earlier, don't we?
They're already beginning.
But they're, but they're, like, they're not, their options are very limited.
Yeah, we're not gonna impact the options.
They're not, they're, the game has, like.
The game hasn't begun yet.
But the rules, but, but the rules.
Rules need to be in place.
Cause some of those pathways have to a credit. So it does start as a freshman.
Well, I agree.
Well, that's what I mean.
Maybe we can have it in February and wait till March.
Yeah, you can't do, you, I think it needs to be in February.
When is the February board meeting?
Before they start. Twenty-first, or is it the next week? I don't know. Twenty-fourth, no, that's.
But come, but coming back in, in.
Twenty-eight.
At, June, after we've, the kids have filled out everything, I think that, that's a mess.
I think it's doable.
Okay. Uh, next item would be, uh, future facility needs.
Board members, this is, every bit of this is purely tentative, and I would like to pick them up after you are done with them. So, outside of step two, which is in Amanda Anderson, um, led charge. This packet in front of you addresses boardroom, central office administration, I have a little, let me read what I've got written. So, what we believe we are tasked with is for our future facility needs to address our central office and having everybody in the same facility, which would be business office, assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, the superintendent, and special education. House them in one building, and therefore we need more space. We cannot fit into the present MLRC with that structure, and we can't fit into this facility with that structure. So we needed more space. An idea that we're floating around right now to get your guidance from is to enlarge this building with new construction and renovate the existing structure. This would allow all of our critical entities that are responsible for running the district to be in one facility, and all of us be able to communicate and coordinate. It would be better for efficiency and communication, and it would also give one thing which would give us an opportunity to have an appropriately sized boardroom, so we're not using a kitchen as part of our boardroom. The other idea is the MLRC. We would utilize that building for student learning. It would house the alternative learning program, the DAEP, and also would have additional rooms if there were other individual structures that we felt needed to be addressed that would be potentially innovative academic programs. So on page one of your, of your facility drawing. Vicky, did you do the other copy too? Pardon? Okay, so this, this is a, actually a third update to the facility, so Vicky was able to take the other one out. So in this one, we, you can see the, the outlined black, dark black is in fact this present building.
Whoa, looking at that one, okay.
So the door in the middle on the far left would become an employee access entrance only with FOB entry. All of the light lines to the right are new construction. There would be a new entry that would be at the bottom, middle, and that entry would be FOB access for the public. The door behind, no, would be going that way.
So, this, with the, with the dark lines, that's the current district?
Yes. So we're, we're looking at the building, parking lots over here.
Okay.
Turn your heel like this when you're looking at it.
Turn it one more time. There, that's not sitting right there.
Okay, okay.
So, this door right here would be out that way. That's this door right there would go towards the high school. The boardroom would go into the parking lot, and offices and bathrooms could go into the parking lot. The, the two entrances at the end would be employee entrance only FOB, and this entrance down here would be FOB, but there would be a closed door behind it, so people couldn't just walk right into this building like they can now through open doors and have access to everyone that's in here. So it would add the needed security for our structure. Um, I've got everyone looking at it to see that we could cover all of the spaces that we need. They don't all have to be this big. For example, the far-left building number, I think it's two eleven, is the superintendent's office. There's no reason to have a superintendent's office that's sort of that big. So this is a first rendition. But I'm sure he made it bigger so that there could be a conference table or whatever in the office.
Which a superintendent needs to have.
Well, but, um, where I'm, where I'm coming from is that this is all just in an original, first blush. And so what this would do is the renovation construction, Demetrius, was about two fifty, two hundred of square foot?
Renovation was two fifty to two seventy-five, new construction is three hundred to three. Renovation was two fifty to two seventy-five, new construction is three hundred to three twenty-five.
Right, is that about right, Mr. Irwin?
I, that's, that might be wrong.
That's what I heard.
So.
A little higher.
The, the, the access over here, all of this, that new construction, that's gonna be at a higher dollar rate, which is why we think we should renovate this building. Additional things that would happen in renovating this building would make it more secure, we would be able to put up studs on these inside brick walls. And actually, novel concept, insulate this building. Cause right now, if you go touch that wall over there, it's access to the outside world. So we would come in and do the spray foam all around, make it a tighter building.
Is it?
Well, we spent a lot of money on securing our students, I think we oughta spend some money on securing y'all.
Well, and I will tell you that, that our, some of our staff over here does, has asked that question, they're like, what are you doing to secure us? And I, I've been hesitant to say, well. The board has tasked me with coming up, so that is why I'm bringing it forward a little bit more publicly now, so that it gets, so I won't feel bad about saying something publicly.
Well, if we're talking security, can we use ester funds?
No.
No. We tried.
I mean, it's a chall, it's a challenge in the district not to have all of the, the. You know, leadership team in the same office where you're always running back and forth. Not, we need more space, let's start there, we need more space and where are you gonna build it, and so that would be.
Well, this allows us to use almost half of the square footage as renovation. And then the other half would be new construction, it would be more expensive, but we would at least save some. So that is the, that is this thought, so let's turn to page two, cause I think page two starts going into. Potential where we might be able to use some ester funds, you know, what we decided, Mr. Wells, that it was, been trying to change the, um. If we still had money left, trying to change the gaps, the learning gaps.
Yes, but we, we, depending on the timing, we utilize our ester funds in a different way to be able to.
Right.
To ensure that this, this, this purchase process actually happens.
So on this.
Total, what, on the first page, what's the total on square footage on the new set?
Uh, we're, we're looking to try to get to about ten thousand square feet.
In the renovation.
Well, the renovation, that's including the renovation.
To get to ten thousand?
Yes.
Basically, basically forty-five hundred.
And fifty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred at, uh, at the renovation rate, fifty-five hundred at new construction.
And then the seventy-four hundred square feet at MLRC would be all at renovation rate. And we would do the same thing there, insulate the outside walls, turn it into more of a school looking like building. And this is the, the first blush, we are not anywhere near, but what we show here is room for ninety students. Which is about five percent of our high school and middle school population combined.
And the use of this would be?
ALP, DAEP, and then potential for some kind of an innovative academic program.
When you say innovative academic program, is that the, we had kicked around the, the, the. Alternative, the high school, with the.
That wouldn't be the step two, so, no, th- those, those two portions I just described, DAP and ALP, DAP is the behavior.
Right.
ALP is the high school academic program, the other would be, and we're just brainstorming at this point. Um, are there, are other things we can do to help the earlier grade elementaries with support?
Gotcha.
So right now, if somebody at third grade at Hutchins or somebody at fourth and fifth grade at Northside, if they're struggling, we don't have any place for them, so. I think that's kind of, I'll let, I'll let Amanda, Dimitri and, uh, Alicia explain that a little bit more because they were the ones really brainstorming this morning.
And we, yeah, we just discussed it this morning, so we haven't really thought it all the way through, but, but Mr. Conley hadn't shared that as an idea, and I mean. Anything we can help with tier three kids or kids that are, are needing more and maybe put them in a smaller area and with more intention on what we're doing with them. That's great, so. But we, like I said, we haven't, we haven't planned it all the way out, so.
What we're, what we're trying to, to get the board to, to see is, are, are we spinning our wheels, cause, Rich, did you come up with kind of a number for that? Three and a half, right?
Uh, probably, maybe a little more, but around there.
Yep, and then Dimitri, what did we save for the renovation of seventy-four hundred, wasn't it like one point seven five? Do my math real quick, so while y'all are talking, Amanda, you want?
Amanda, where would you spend people that are still in, at MLRC go?
So, we talked about, they would be here too.
Here.
So we have about fourteen staff members that we have at Meadow Lane right now, and so we're looking at. I just saw the, the draw-up and Alicia and I have been talking about what that would look like for all the staff at, at Meadow Lane and how we could fit them into the, this, this structure, yeah. So.
It is a lot of money.
Oh, I said that too.
You forget I was the teacher too.
Are we still looking for a place for the step two? Have we had any luck finding a building or anything?
We have a couple, we have one that we're, that we think would be a great fit for us, but. I, well, you're the money guy, so.
You're the money guy. You're sitting in that special seat.
That's right. So we are exploring other options too, but we do have one location that has really piqued our interest, so.
So that's still on the table?
That's still on the table, yes.
But are any, uh, I'll say something that'll be wildly unpopular, is there any, uh, everybody has an office in this scen, these scenarios. In the business world, that, those are completely over.
No, that, that's not accurate, that won't be accurate, this building.
Is there, I mean, most people are going to a bullpen type situation in some roles, i- is there not room for that in this idea?
I think that's something.
That's, we've been talking about that in Hollywood.
In, in the business realm, everybody needs to be looking at each other, you know, we need to be, you know, cross-training. Because I need to know how to do his job, and he needs to know how to do my job, because, you know. On that side of the fence, we all need to be looking at each other.
Another thing in the business world, when you try to take people's office away and put them in a bullpen, they get really mad. So.
That's why you have to build it without them, so they can get room in the bullpen.
So, uh. What's the next step on, on this, obviously, we gotta fine tune everything and, and kinda get our architect, engineer's estimate.
Can we, like, when?
I'm not.
On our, uh, like, on our prioritize, we had facilities needs that we worked on, got a lot of stuff done on it.
Yep.
On, like, could we just look at that again?
Sure.
And, and.
Probably not a lot less than.
There isn't much left on, that's why we're going to this.
Do we have, like, the money, we're thinking it would cost to do all this, do we have that or would that be a bond or?
No, it would not be a bond, so let it be written, so let it be known.
It's my, it is my understanding that if a bond comes, it's the, the board's preference through the facilities committee is that a bond would be. Building new construction that, um, anything but new construction for educational needs. We have to find a way to pay forward out of budget and fund balance, that's, that is my understanding, so. We're looking probably at, get, Dimitri and I estimate it's gonna be, this project right here that we're talking about will probably be around five million dollar mark.
What's gonna happen to our FEMA?
Stuck in government.
Stuck in.
I think that would be smart to, to re, revisit the, just to recheck the list, uh, and we have knocked out a bunch of. Kinda get a feel for where this project might fit in, there's no re, there's no reason at all not to proceed with the planning of this. And, because we're not approving it.
Right.
By, by any means, so there's no reason not to, not to bring a plan to the, to the table, so we can proceed with that.
And we can get a few, a few local people to look at it and they can give us a contracting estimate. We have some people in the community who would agree to do that, that they would look at and say, this is what I think this will cost you.
Sounds good.
That's basically what we need there.
Okay, and basically, the reason that the board would do that is because we realize that we are out of space. And we're trying to figure out, okay, where do, where do we build new space at and what makes sense, so, that's why you need to check one.
Did they struc, structurally just build it in good shape?
Yes, sir.
Alright, that takes us to closed session.
Yes, and board members, before we go into closed session, outside of that one action item, um, which is going to be. Um, the resolution.
Six B two.
Six B two, and, uh, a discussion that would be had about senior serve. I don't see anything else that would be requiring everyone that's in the audience to stay unless they so chose, does the board have any preference?
Make up again.